Order, I love the kind of more education, uh, regular meeting, today is August twenty second. Our meeting begins at six P M. At this time, would you, uh, stand with us, please? So let's have a pledge of allegiance and one. A pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Amen, you made the speech. That was before.
Hamilton.
President.
Michael Hammer.
Here.
Brandon Sellers.
Present.
Louis Robinson.
Here.
Pete Jones.
Present.
I don't see a P yet, so we have one.
Thank you. So at this time, uh, we need to approve the agenda.
Okay, I recommend approval of agenda as presented, however, there will be within that agenda, uh, an amended personnel report, uh, so I can note that when we get to that, that part of the meeting. But there will be, there will be a revised, uh, personnel report. But I do recommend approval of the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have, uh, a recommendation for approval of the agenda with the revised personnel report. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Thank you. Next item is the approval of our minutes and payroll.
Okay, I recommend approval of minutes and payroll as presented until I twenty fifth, uh, two thousand nineteen regular meeting, June August fifteen, two thousand nineteen special call meeting.
Okay, we have a recommendation for approval of minutes and payroll. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Sir.
For minutes, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Okay, minutes and payroll approved. Item four is recognitions.
Ms. Benson, have you seen Cory? Yes, okay, so we'll do, we'll do student recognition in a second. Good evening, uh, it's good to see everyone here this evening. Um, again, it's, it's encouraging to me, uh, that our board meetings, if you were to, if you were to write on a pencil and paper, uh, the percentage of our meetings that is presenting, in this case, recognitions of our outstanding staff, or, uh, the time we spend on curriculum and budget and so on, I'm very, uh, pleased. Because around the country and around the state, there's many, uh, board meetings are spent with issues. And so I'm very pleased with, uh, that we have a chance and a whole section of people here, uh, to recognize our outstanding staff and what they're doing. And so this evening, uh, it's a, it's an honor, uh, to, uh, recognize our secretaries, our building secretaries, um, because they're the front end people. And being out in the buildings, uh, again, I try to get to each building weekly, I really do, and so, and all the secretaries know that, 'cause I, I try to make sure I touch base with each one of them when I'm in the building. Um, and we all, we all have a few inside jokes, and, and so it's great to see, to see you guys here this evening. Uh, but, but I do get to see firsthand. So this isn't just some canned speech, appreciating secretaries like, like is done around the country. Uh, this is a sincere appreciation, uh, from what not only do I hear, but what I see firsthand. And what I see firsthand is you are the front end people of our school system. You're the first, when people enter that building, you're the first front end of what they see. And, and, and you're the first person that will have an impact on how they feel about that building, uh, when they come into it. Parents and community members. But what I would like to share in my, my speech and my presentation to you this evening, and my appreciation this evening, is how you are with the young people. I want you to know, and you know I love those kids, I want you to know I greatly appreciate, that when those young people come to your office, and they have problems, they have concerns, that you treat them with, with love. You're firm, and I've seen you, I've seen you in action. You're firm, and I, I appreciate that. Uh, but you treat the kids with love, and, and that means a lot to me, and, and I know it means a lot to those young people. Because we underestimate sometimes the impact that when children are little, things that happen to them. Like, when we were children, things that, that we remember, good and bad. Don't underestimate the impact that you have upon children, that they'll remember about you, and when they went to you for help. So we have a small token of appreciation for you, uh, this evening. Uh, but I cannot take credit, of course, uh, Tina put these, these, uh, baskets together, so I don't know, Tina, do you want to let them know what's in there?
It's a surprise.
It's a surprise. So, okay, we'll just do that, but, uh, but I'll call you up, and then I'll get, I'll hand the baskets out. I don't know, building principals, if you want to, maybe I'll, I'll get through this, and then, and then, building principals, you're welcome to, uh, say a few words. Uh, so first, um, let's hear Stacy Char- Charlton.
No?
No, no. Lucy Foster. The high school, Ringo High School. Daryl Stanford. York County School. Lisa Towns. Ham Till. Ham? So it's.
Big smile.
Building principals. I'm good. Hey, on the half, we got a token of our presentation.
Hey, we had, uh, on the half, all the teachers, all the teachers want to show our appreciation, so thank you, Miss Stacy.
From me and the staff, we are presenting to Stanford with a, a little small token of appreciation. She's the glue that binds us all together and keeps us straight, and, um, she's been so good to me. This year, starting out, I was thinking about things that needed to be done, and she was already getting those things done before I could even give her a list. So, uh, first class, thank you.
This is kind of unfair. I, I see, um, this, their basket, then I have the, the blue basket over here, I didn't want to bring it up. I've known Miss, uh. I'm not, I'm not, but she's not going to bear the camera bringing up, I'm not too embarrassed. Miss, uh. I've known Miss Foster for a long, long time, like twenty-one days, I think. And it's, and, but it's amazing, when I walked in, for the first day, it felt like she treated me like she had known me for twenty-one years. And if you know Miss Foster, then that's, you understand. And I didn't know anything about her other than she was just nice, and she was that calm after the storm. So I had to go to her daughter, who's laughing at me right now, and ask her, I said, what does she like to drink? She said, well, sweet tea. I said, what is, what does she like sweets? She said, peanut em and m, that's easy. And I said, what does she like to eat? And she said, what is it, waffles? So that's what I got in the basket.
Uh, we appreciate Miss Van Mahoney, she's the best secretary, but she's also the best counselor. She listens to everybody and just smiles and says, okay. So we appreciate her for everything that she does for us.
And you're saying that's the best secretary. Well, and everybody knows, as everybody said, I'm always so extra. If you tested out, I wouldn't be extra today. It'd be coming later. But her, she knows her, um, but she got to keep it fast, hard, and go, yes. So she is great, we appreciate it, she is the right hand, and the left hand. She's the mama, and the healer, and the doctor, and she's the first one to want to go and train for this. She want to train gold filters. They, we can't do without her. If she leave, we can go down. I'm sorry, you don't hold us an extra soul.
That's right.
Congratulations to you all. I would just say, too, um, that's near and due to our position that you serve in. This is what I did for the first sixteen years of my life. I know exactly how important your job is, and how sometimes thankless it is. And, um, also, as a business administration instructor, we call you our office administrators now. We don't necessarily call you secretaries, but you are a jacket building, you're the everything person. Things don't get done when you're out of place, and so, thank you so very much. We appreciate everything that you do.
My, uh, my next presentation, it is a little bit of a setup, um, our recognition is a little bit of a setup, because, um, we will recognize central office staff at another board meeting as a group, and everything central office staff does. Uh, so this was for building level administrators, and you have to remember, uh, Tina is very, very close to me, and knows my every move. And so I had to be very coy, uh, about this, this next presentation. It's a little emotional for me, because anyone that knows Tina knows that, uh, she really is a foundation to our school system. And by foundation, yeah, people, everybody's nodding their heads, 'cause you know, it's, it's not just, these aren't just nice words, this is real. This is real life. So if you're not aware of it, then I'm glad that our meetings are broadcast now, and I, I know our board is aware of it. Uh, but, but what Tina does day in, day out, people will have no clue. She knows everything about any operation, any process, and she knows it well. Uh, she knows her staff members, she takes time, uh, if, if any student comes into our office, she takes time for that student. And even just today, uh, she, and I've been totally happy about it, but a few people will come in, in the middle of her being really busy. She's a human being, she's very busy, she has a lot going on, but she will take time. She will take time for every person individually that comes into that office with any concern. But more than that, to me, is the support that she is. Uh, she sends out each week, uh, she took a little break over the summer, uh, but each week she sends out a note of encouragement, because she knows what we all go through in leadership, and she understands it more than anybody. And so she sends out a spiritual note of encouragement each, each week, um, that keeps us together, uh, more than what people may realize, uh, as a group. And the central office certainly understands that. So we will do another recognition for central office, uh, but there's no way, there's no way I could let an opportunity, when we're talking about secretaries, and when we're talking about front end people, this is the front end of this school system, sitting right here. And so I love her, she's awesome. Tina Powell. Student recognition, Cory, I'm going to talk about leadership and how you're leading, you had me sweating a little bit, coming in a little bit late, but, uh, uh, tonight, we're going to recognize one of our students, Jacory Smith, and I, I, I call him Cory, I know him pretty well. Um, he, he's one of our leaders. And what I will say, and I want Cory to hear, and I want to make sure he understands, and I'm going to find these leaders in each one of our buildings, in McKenzie, actually, just all, all the school buildings that we have, espe- secondary school buildings. Um, and here's why it's important to me, so you're going to hear the same speech more than once. Anybody that has coached before, especially at maybe the varsity, junior varsity level, understands, a key component of your team, or if you've been on sports teams, I know we have athletes sitting here. If you've been on sports teams, a key component of that team is your leadership, your upperclassmen leadership. Usually your senior leadership and adults, sometimes your juniors and seniors, usually juniors and seniors. And what I want Cory to understand, as I present this certificate to him, I want him to understand the importance of that. When I was head basketball coach, I could, and I, again, I know we have coaches sitting up here, um, I could only do so much as a coach. It was from the internal leadership that, that really a lot happened, good and bad. It's from the internal leadership. So my captains were a very key component part of when I had successful years, and, and some years I weren't so successful. A lot was on those senior captains, or on those upperclassmen captains, uh, because they're one of the group. Because, and not only that, and we have a child right, sitting right over there, a little one. What I want to make sure Cory and her upperclassmen understand is that whether they choose it or not, whether they choose to be leaders or not, those little ones are watching you. And they're watching your every move, good and bad. They're watching you. And it's a great responsibility, and this year, a lot of my recognitions are going to be about leadership. It's a great responsibility that you hold. And I want you to know, I appreciate what I've seen, what I've heard about you, and I appreciate you even helping us this summer, uh, in the hiring process of, of the principalship. Uh, I princ- I, I, I appreciate that you care about the community, and, and your school, and your classmates, and again, those little ones, that you watch out for them, and you provide a good example. So with all that said, and with the pressure I put on this young man, and I don't, I don't mind that, uh, let's, let's, uh, recognize, uh, Jacory Smith.
Congratulations to you, Jacory. Thank you for your leadership. Reconations, for, um, your update.
I just talked about how good Tina was, didn't I? Heat is warm in here this evening, sorry, we, we didn't turn the air on soon enough, so I, I apologize for the heat. And by the way, the recognitions are over, but you're wa- certainly, I encourage you and welcome you to, uh, stay for the, for the meeting here. Go ahead, go. One more. Student achievement. Uh, if you've been watching the news, uh, if you don't have to watch the news, actually, it was just two days ago, I was looking for a story that we had on the news, uh, regarding our new playground over at, uh, Greenville Elementary. And even that evening on the news, there was a story about cell phones and cellphone usage in schools. I have a friend that teaches in a very large district in Dallas, Texas, and what, I call them mega districts, when you're talking eighty, ninety thousand student school systems. And that school system elected to pull cell phones out altogether, cellphone out, technology out of the schools. And when I, when I was talking to my friend about that, what I thought I would hear is, I thought I would hear that it would be linked to student achievement. That's what I thought, that's why I would think schools would pull them out. And now that I've done more research, and I would encourage Board of Education, do your own research, you don't have to, you don't, won't have to Google too far. Uh, you really won't, and community, do your own research, it doesn't, it's not hard. The reason that schools are pulling them out is certainly academics. School is statistical, it's becoming statistical, that when cell phones are pulled out, academic achievement's going up, and they, they're starting, it's still new, pulling them out, but they're starting to correlate that, direct correlations to academic achievement. But the reason that this school system, according to my friend in Dallas, Texas, pulled them out, is the well-being of the student. I was unaware of the connections between social media during the school day and teen suicide. I was unaware of the social media used during the school day, and I guess teens, teens now harm themselves. And it, and a lot of it has to do with the social media that is taking place during the school day. And so with that said, we, I don't mean to turn this into a lecture tonight about the social media and cell phones in the school, uh, but we've been talking about that in administrative meetings, as far as what we want to do in our school system. And so Tina will be coordinating with the Board of Education, if you agree to it. That, and I agree with administrators, I think it was actually Mr. Marlowe, uh, if you don't mind me saying, Mr. Marlowe, that brought it up, and it was a good point. Uh, it was you, wasn't it, Mr. Marlowe, that brought up that we should be on the same page? That we need to be on the same page going through this together, and when we say we, the whole governance team, Board of Education and leadership. Because this will be a huge issue in the school system, and I want to make sure the community knows, and I'm aware I'm talking on, on TV, or on the, on, on the line right now, I'm aware of that. So I want to make sure I make it clear, I'm not saying that we're pulling them out of the school, I'm not saying that we're changing what we're doing, current policy. I'm just saying, let's have a discussion, because it was more serious than I even thought, when I was bringing the discussion up to administrative table for academic reasons. That's why I was bringing it to the table. I was unaware of, and it's heartbreaking to me, it's heartbreaking to me, of the well-being of the students and the connection to social media, and I, and I stress, during the school day. And, and I know it's on the weekends and evenings as well. So if the board's okay, uh, we'd like to set up a workshop, and we can do, you know, we can do a one hour, one item workshop, and teammates can coordinate some dates. Is that okay, that we, we coordinate that, or is there any, any thoughts on that?
Do you want to probably do it next month?
It, it would be nice, sooner than later.
Go ahead and have the discussion next month. We'll do it at five o'clock.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Is that, everybody okay with that?
Well, we'll have to check our calendars.
Okay, check your calendars.
We have two meetings already on the calendar.
Right, but for the regular meeting you're talking.
Obviously, right.
Yes.
Pick it back to the beginning.
I like it.
Is that not our, uh, budget hearing, five o'clock?
No, well, I don't know what the budget hearings are, we're trying to.
We've got two.
There's two, yes. So a regular meeting is nine, so we do five.
Yeah, I like that. So you don't have to let me know now, I know I'm springing this on you now, Tina, we'll send you some emails and we'll confirm that, but that's a good idea, we'll just go at five o'clock, if possible, on the regular.
Is that enough time for everybody to be prepared?
Well, yeah, because what we need now is general direction. So we, we're not going to get into technicalities, because we do have a policy committee. What we're looking for from the Board of Education is general direction to take to possibly, we may not change anything, possibly do the policy committee, and at least for administrators, to hear the general direction and the thoughts of the board, because I do agree with what was brought up at, at our administrative meeting, that we better, not that we shouldn't be together and everything, but we better be kind of like close together, uh, because it's going to be, it could possibly be a groundbreaking. Right, no, we'll have them at the meeting.
I would agree.
You bet.
Exactly.
Yeah, I agree.
We'd like to hear from the administrators.
Yeah, I agree.
At the work session.
Yeah.
In regards to their thoughts and what they're thinking about.
Yeah, and we've been discussing it, and so that, that won't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll invite all the teachers, and me and them, once they come, I'd like to hear what they experience.
Good idea.
Especially those other, like, teachers, cell phones.
Yeah, we'll, workshop right here, we have room.
And on the same, uh, uh, let's not forget, uh, we have a parent, I believe, on policy committee, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, but, so, or someone from PTA or PTO, but.
We'll send them in.
Let's, let's bring them in to the very beginning of this.
Because, because again, they do have to be in on it as well.
Let's bring them in to the very beginning of this, so that we don't have misinformation flowing around out there, because this is going to be a very explosive.
And that's why I'm bringing it here tonight, I agree with you. So we'll do that, good idea. Okay. I'm sorry.
I'm really interested to hear from, also, maybe some coaches, standarizers, anybody that's interacting with the students, in which might.
We'll try to get across that.
Or stuff like that, just basically cross the spectrum.
Okay.
We'd like to have a kind of like a listening section, section for the board at first, and then.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
Good idea, thank you.
I don't think it's a case of whether or not phones are a problem or not. The, the phones are a problem, it's whether or not we want to do something about it or not, or whether or not we, you know, what, what do we do if we decide to do something about it? They are a serious problem. You know, you could talk to someone in my business who, on a daily basis, in the middle of a movie, where people have paid nine dollars a piece if they're an adult, somebody phone rings and somebody answers in the middle of a movie. Hello? And has a conversation. And then I've got ten or fifteen or twenty people coming out screaming at me, well, what do you think happens with teachers? Um, you know, I have, I have employees that are students of Greenwood High School, texting me all the time, very quiet.
It's very difficult for teachers to, uh.
I mean, and I text them, going, are you in school? Why, why is this happening? So it's not whether or not it's a problem or not, it's a problem. Do we want to do something about it, and if we do, what do we want to do?
And that, and that's why I want to have a discussion, hope it's just on that.
You touched on, we were talking about social media, on a daily basis, I wish we could discuss, and that is, many systems take a social media policy. I think Mr. Howard's here, I think Richer County has a social media policy that applies to, well, students, but to employees. Is that not correct?
Social media policy that applies to employees. I do believe they do have.
Yeah, I mean, many systems in the state are, are adopting those policies, and what you can put, put yourself in the student classroom. And it extends to, you know, not outside the classroom, but what happens when we have employees doing that kind of thing, and we have parents who know that, parents upset about it.
These are the things we want to talk about, though, in the meeting, so since we are going to come together in a meeting, let's just hold that for the meeting.
Agree. Well, so we can prepare.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, next slide. Maintained programs, I, I do want to commend, uh, building principals, especially, uh, at the elementary level, uh, and I know Miles is going to be here this evening because of a football game. Uh, but I do commend the principals for moving forward on providing more clubs and activities for our young people. Uh, no matter what we label it, whether we label Butler County Commitment, whether we label it just common sense, or Maslow's hierarchy of, of needs, uh, no matter what we label it, uh, I have, well, statistics would show it, and common sense would tell you, when the kids are connected to something, uh, when they're connected to something positive, academic achievement does improve. And so we will continue, uh, to go down that road. Uh, but I also want to make sure people understand that we need to continue to look at clubs that are science oriented. Um, you know, we're going to look to, I believe we're pursuing a grant, uh, with robotics, and it's something that was very important to me in my previous school, is that we continue to look for, uh, not only clubs maybe or, uh, that are oriented around extracurricular activities that are typically known, like athletics and so on, uh, but also science oriented clubs are going to be very important. Uh, so we will continue, as we look at our programs in our schools, uh, we, no matter what we label it, we're going to continue to look at ways to get our students involved, uh, because that's going to be the key. And I love what Miss Ash is doing, and I love what, uh, Miss Adair is doing, and I love what our principals are doing with the academic focus. Don't get me wrong, but for long-term, sustainable growth, it's going to be about our kids being involved, uh, and, and again, it's about the whole well-being of the whole child, and we're going to continue to focus on that. Uh, school, school climate, uh, again, thank you, I thank the secretaries for being here this evening, uh, and that recognition, I hope you, I hope you received it as sincere from the heart, uh, because we do appreciate what you do, and we will continue those recognitions. Uh, Cory, I appreciate you taking time to see me and be here, we will continue to do that. Uh, we had two good meetings, uh, we met with the, uh, custodians this week, and we had a very productive meeting with our transportation staff. Uh, so I want the Board of Education to know we will continue, uh, as we look at school climate, a big part of that, of course, is listening to the input of employees, and that's going to be a big part of what we do. Evaluation process, uh, while the teacher evaluation process is ongoing, uh, I, I want the Board to know, I'll start evaluation of the administrators soon. Evaluation process, while the teacher evaluation process is ongoing, I want the Board to know I'll start evaluation of the administrators soon after Christmas, and so I'll keep you posted on that. We're continuing, and I don't know if it's been done here across the board in some years, if at all, and that is, what we're working towards is all employees are evaluated each year. No matter what the position in the school system, our evaluation process is aimed at improvement, and all our employees need to know where they stand. I feel strongly about that, no matter what your position in the school system, and again, it's not a got-you system, it's an evaluation process to improve what we do, to become better. Facilities and technology, just so you know, we, as you know, and this isn't a broken record on this, there's some new updates here. We are looking to standardize our equipment, supplies, and material. I want to make sure the Board of Education understands that the effort of doing this is to raise our standard of cleanliness and operations in the building. So I want to make sure the Board understands not everyone will be on board all the time. That sometimes there will be resistance to change of processes that people maybe have done for years. And you're welcome to let me know, to sit in on these meetings, we have them monthly, so please, please let me know. It'd be nice if you would do that, come in, sit on the meeting, and see yourself, because I want you to see, and I want our community to know, these meetings are oriented towards input and listening, but as we standardize what we're doing, not everyone's happy all the time as we raise the standard of the cleanliness in our buildings. And so while so far it's been, the meetings have been very positive, we are going to get to a point where we're going to say, look, this is how we clean restrooms, this is the level of cleanliness we expect, here's the equipment we use and so on, and sometimes change for people's hearts. And so I just want the Board to know, you may hear things as we go down this road, but we really do need to standardize what we do. Cleanliness and operation and functionality of buildings is very important, and it does link to student achievement. And actually, I think it was part of our survey results that we just had, that that is important to the staff and students as well, of course, is the environment. Safety and security, we will continue to update our plans, and I appreciate what Catherine Tanner's helping us on, and Joe, I appreciate what you do on that, and so there really is no change there. Communications and public relations, it's work, but, you know, we continue to attend those meetings that are listed up there, and I would encourage Board members that if you would like to attend any of those meetings with me, I think it's good public relations for people to see you in those meetings, I know you're already very busy, but any meeting that you see listed up there, if you would like to attend any meeting with me, please let me know, and I'm sure the groups would appreciate it, the clubs and organizations in our community would appreciate it. And Brandy will give her report this evening, so I won't steal her show. Any questions?
All right, this is the financial update for June two thousand and nineteen, you can go to the next slide. Our accounts payroll expenditures for June was approximately one point seven nine million dollars, and that's more than normal or usual, because we have the semi-annual interest payment and the annual principal payment on the two thousand and seventeen bond, which was one point three five million dollars. Gross payroll expenditures were one point nine million dollars, the ending general fund balance was two point four million dollars, or one point two five months of operating balance, and the net operations year-to-date was seventeen million, two hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. The next slide, this is a chart that shows our wincent sales tax collections month by month. You can see, I can't read it up there to the point of ten either, but so far, year-to-date, we've collected one million, seven hundred ninety thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, and our sales tax collections are remaining up, at the end of June, they are up six point nine percent compared to the same time last year. The next slide, that's just a chart that shows the same information for those of you who like graphs. And then the next slide, this is our property tax analysis, and collections are starting to taper off, which is normal, but they do remain up by two point six percent compared to the same time last year. So far, year-to-date, we've collected two million, eight hundred, five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So if you can, if you look there, you can see that that's more than what we collected over the whole fiscal year last year. Last year, we collected a little over two point eight million dollars, so we're already ahead of the game by four thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So each thing we collect July opposite of September, if we continue on trend with collections, we should end the year with a growth of three and a half percent. Whereas right now, we're, a collection grew by two point six percent. This is just a graph showing the same information, and two thousand and nineteen is the line in red, and then the last slide is just our, Tina, you can go to the next one. That's our general fund ending balance, and I don't know why those numbers didn't show up, I'm sorry, but they show on my printout. But as of June, and I've already said it, we ended with two point four million dollars, which is one point two five months of operating balance. And then I finished reconciling July earlier in the week, and we ended with two point three million, which is one point two two months of operating. So we're starting to go down a little bit, and I did include the projected year-end balance that I presented in the vote amendment, which is a little over two million dollars, which is slightly over one month's operating balance. But of course, you know, we did receive that seven hundred something thousand dollars in the advancement, the EFT advancement and technology fund. So that's going to make us end the year with, because depending on, you know, but probably around when we had months of operating balance. Yes, yes, but I just want you to know, that's the reason why it's going to be way more than what I had, what we had presented in the budget amendment. Any questions?
Thank you. No technology report, okay, curriculum instruction, I'm sure there's no data.
Always something going on with curriculum instruction.
Hey, listen, I've got my phone out with a timer on, so how about that? I was actually prepared. This is going to be, you know, these meetings are kind of opening up, if you don't mind. I've got, thank you so much. I appreciate that, I'll save a couple of minutes. So I want to come before you, generally, I'm talking about elementary school. And at this point in time, we are in the middle of collecting our data for the beginning of the school year. We ended on a higher note with elementary school, very proud of everything that we were doing there. One of the things that we don't look at as much is high school, and partially because, you know, I found myself a little out of field, because I came in as the K-eight director and was kind of given high school, and so, but we are, we've got work to do. And so it's jack-of-all-trades, master of none, I'm the K-twelve director, so wherever we tend to focus our efforts, that's where we tend to grow. But I've got from pre-K all the way here, if I have to pick a focus, then I'm focusing on the foundation, because if that's not right, then everything else is going to crumble. So it was very intentional where I started, however, I'm really concerned about our ACT scores. So tonight, I just want to give you an update of where we are, so if you go ahead to the first slide. This, now, I could work this any which way, but I'm just going to just say it like it is, I'm truly concerned. Yes, we had way more students that tested, why did I say way more, about twenty more students that tested in last year that tested the year before, but in every category, English, math, reading, science, we're down, and I'm concerned. So again, I don't, I don't come before you sugarcoating the reality, because that is, and, and so at the top, if you could see it, those are our percentage of students who met the benchmarks for English, math, yeah, so for those of you that can't read it out, I'll just be blunt. English was twenty-eight percent, math was four percent, reading eleven percent, and science five, and we only had one student in the district last year that met all four. Well, why am I concerned? We have a lot of dual enrollment going on, so there's a disconnect between what I see here and what we're offering, and we've got to do better. And we don't get better by covering stuff up, we need to be out front and let people know that we need help, and so we've reached out for help. The second thing is the five-year trends, you can see it all the way down. These reports exist for every school, this is an ATC profile, ACT profile report, each of the schools have them, and please trust and believe they have been going in already and analyzing these, so these are our district averages. So fifteen, fifteen point four in mathematics, fifteen point two in reading, fifteen point six in science, and then a composite of fifteen point five. So just to be clear, for, to meet college readiness benchmarks, in English, that should be eighteen, and our district average is fifteen. In mathematics, it should be twenty-two, and it's fifteen. In reading, it should be twenty-two, and it's fifteen point two, in science, it should be twenty-three, and it's at a fifteen point six, we have some work to do. So that is our current reality, again, I'm not sugarcoating, that is where we are, however, you know me, we always have a plan. So if you would go to the next slide, here are the next steps. Now, I will say that our administrators have already been looking at their data, kudos and hats off to everyone, but I remember Ms. Benson, it may have been her first day on the job, if it wasn't her first, it may have been her second, and she called and she said, "What can I do? I have no money," she said. "But I'm concerned about these scores," so it's not that people are just sitting by idle and doing nothing, but what gets measured gets done, and if we don't put it out there, then surely we're not doing anything about it. So here are some just very minimal next steps. So what I have actually in my hand is this book, I went to a workshop last year when I was first selected to take on nine through twelve, and I said to myself, "I've never done nine through twelve," so I need to grow myself in this area, and I went to the, is that my phone? Yes, my little watch, please turn it off, maybe that's somebody telling me to stop talking. Thank you so much. So when I went to this conference, they gave us this book called Begin With The End In Mind. It takes those profile reports and it breaks them down, it attaches each score for students to measures for growth, and we had someone come in last year and begin this discussion, and they were good discussions, but did it translate into action, not based on the scores that I saw, but again, I did not spend as much time in high school as I did in elementary school. So, so the first thing is, you have to look at the data, you have to own the data, then we need to make plans. Plans have been made, principals have been together, some of the things that already are on the agenda and moving forward, and you will see them listed here, I'm just going to give you a quick shot, you can read it, of course, I won't read it verbatim, but mastery prep is going to provide some ACT prep for our juniors in particular. One of the things that Ms. Adair and I have talked about is, we really need to go down to ninth and tenth grade and get them, because it's almost, I say too late, but by the time they get there, that foundation has been set, again, that's why we're on the other end, but we've got thoughts about what we can do, we just have no money for how we can do it. These things that I'm talking about right now, Gear Up has already partnered with us in doing some of these things. They're going to supply, so under this line, Gear Up is helping us, they're going to be supplying online access to ACT Mastery Essentials, twenty-four to thirty-six hours of instruction for ELA reading and math, and math and science. They will also provide digital licenses for all teachers for ACT element bell ringers. So the bell ringers that schools have been trying to make up and figure out, what can we do, they're going to provide it. It's broken into a hundred and eighty-five to ten-minute exercises that will expose all of our students to some type of ACT-type question. And then an ACT boot camp with parents, this is what I need you to know, so if you have students that you want to have that extra, that extra boost up for the ACT, there's a boot camp that will be offered in February. Now, notice, the session will be limited to a hundred and twenty participants for each school. So we've got to figure out some type of way to make that equitable, but it's usually first come, first served when it goes out, but if you don't know that that's an option, you don't know to look for it. So I, for people listening at home and for people here in this room, please tell your neighbors, your cousins, your sisters, your friends, that's something else that'll be available. So as you can see, we've already got some things in place for helping, but we can lead that horse to the water, we can't make it drink. So we can offer all of these things, but if no one shows up, it's just a great offering. If no one comes and gets involved, it's just a great offering, so we want your help and we need your help as it relates to our ACT scores. Any questions?
Is the hundred and twenty participants of each school, is that for juniors, or is that going to be for sophomores too?
It is my understanding initially that they said juniors, but that's a big group for some of our places like Mackenzie.
That's what I must say, if we have a hundred and twenty spots at Mackenzie, or a hundred and twenty spots at George Castle, and you've got, well, that covers all the juniors and Georgia and Mackenzie, unless something's really changed with the enrollment this year. Why can't the Greenville kids, if they don't make it one-twenty, why can't they go down to Georgia and Mackenzie?
If they only cover Gear Up, those students, which is eleventh and twelfth grade, so...
But we can ask, Rita McLean has been in those meetings and in discussion with Gear Up, bless her, because she's really taken the lead on that. I was not in those sessions, but again, we have not, because we asked not, so it doesn't hurt to ask, because when we're not paying for it, we don't get the right rules, but I would definitely ask.
My understanding, even if it's juniors and seniors, that's still, what, sixty per school roughly, sixty-five? There's still, there's still going to be a lot of open spots in the South End of the county that I would hope to be available to the high school, Greenville high school.
I agree, for a part, I mean, like I said, the only thing we can do is ask, so, and I don't have a problem with asking, you can ask anybody, I feel like a person would cut out all the time. If you could move to the next one, and we're going to slide through, because I have about ten seconds left on my ten minutes.
I'll say final four is kind of fun, growing some of our teachers for those ACT standards as well.
So that's not the only thing, but I just wanted to put out that those are the immediate things, and then you can see other things in everybody's CIPs. All right, so here's the quick thing on the surveys, highest performing items are these that are listed, this is with our student survey. So at the top, what you will see is the elementary scores, and the bottom, you will see the high school scores. What I want to point out is, in both of these categories, were the highest totals for our surveys, our students were saying that, hey, my teachers want me to do my best work, my school is preparing me, my school wants me to succeed, okay? This is great on the surface, and I presented this at institutes, so I won't take too long, so our students do think that we want them to learn, and they do think that we're preparing them, so that's the great things. Go to the next two services, students don't care what you know until they know that you care, next one. But here's the bottom line on the flip side of this, even though they think that we want them to do well, based on this survey data of what was their lowest for both middle school, I mean, for elementary and high school, it's, they don't believe that we believe in them as people, as individuals, that's what I read into this. In my school, all students are treated with respect, in my schools, students help each other even if they're not friends. In my school, the building and grounds are safe, clean, and provided healthy place for living. These things were low, the principal and teachers ask me what I think about at school. Do you see the disconnect between the highest and the lowest? The highest is like the stuff of school, the things of school, they know that we want them to do that, but then I almost question why they think we want them to do it, is it for us, or is it for them? So regardless, we have a disconnect, and we need to figure out some way to get that back together. So on the other end of that, our parents, no parent left behind, I feel welcome at my child's school. We only have three hundred and twenty-four people respond, this district is way bigger than three hundred and twenty-four parents, but yet that's all that cared to respond, and maybe it's because they think, well, who's really listening, is anybody even going to read this? And even if they do read the surveys, are we going to do anything about it, is anything going to change? Well, we certainly won't change it if we don't know that change is needed, and when I see that only fifty-five percent of people that took the time to even do the survey, even think that they're welcome at the school, that's a problem, that's a problem. My child's school encourages me to be involved in my child's education, fifty-one percent. I'm aware of the school's academic goals and how I can be involved, forty-three percent. Okay, next one. Child, school, home connection, we're disconnected, somehow, we're doing school, but we're not getting our, our community involved in a way that's going to... If we can strengthen that bond, then that's going to be powerful. So I've heard things like sending home the homework and having these contacts in a way that's really meaningful for parents, because when I have parents that say on number ten... because when I have parents that say on number ten and number eleven, ten in particular, I know what my child should know and be able to do in reading or in mathematics at his or her grade level. Only thirty-nine percent of our parents are saying they know and I can attest to that because we've had a lot of people come whose students have failed to matriculate to the next grade level and have come to the district office and we're breaking things down and saying this in particular is what your child short of, cause all we know is, did they pass? And we're not understanding that they're, they're missing these gaps and we have to do a better job. But again, there's always a plan. This is our overall district, every school has broken their own stuff down, so go to the next slide. Plan to get our parents back, we need our parents back in the school. We need our parents back in the school like we need prayer and everything, I suspect in the school. We need our parent support, school teams came together in the summer, they analyzed the surveys, they got creative and they have a plan. See your individual school CIPs, parents, if you've never seen your school CIPs, go to the school, you have access to it. It's not a secret, it's not something that should sit on the shelf and know that it is a continuous improvement plan. So we are constantly trying to improve, but we cannot improve because we're all thinking the same thing until somebody comes from outside and tells us something different. We'll continue to do what we've done and continue to get the same results, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item six is our informational report of fundraisers and requests for use of school buses. So item seven is our financial report and we need approval for that.
We can approve all the financial reports as presented, our financial statement is due two thousand and nineteen and the base statement is due two thousand and nineteen.
You have a motion for that?
Motion.
Second, anyone?
I'll say it.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Okay, item eight is approval of principal contracts.
We recommend approval of principal contracts, future president, principal, Virginia School, Jamie Howard, principal, Greenbelt High School.
Okay, you have a recommendation for approval of prin- principal contracts, um, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Thank you, I'll give you, approval of BID results for, uh, produce for our child nutrition program.
We recommend approval of BID results for the produce for the child nutrition program, uh, as presented on page three.
For food products, we recommend BID. Okay, so is there a motion for this?
Motion.
Second. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Item ten, personnel report.
Okay, recommend, uh, the revised personnel report and revision is date twenty-two nineteen. And I wanna note, if you would note that, I think I had that in too hard time, uh, with Ms. Vickery, Vickery, um, at the top, that effective state of retirement on the October first, uh, because you can see down below, uh, there's a leave of absence through September, so I do wanna make that note. And then you can see highlighted item number under enrollment, uh, number ten and eleven with Haley Lee, uh, at Greenbelt High School and Ms. Grayson, uh, as best record, you'd see those items noted as well. So I do recommend personnel report as presented, revised.
Okay, so is there a motion on the revised personnel report?
Motion. Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Okay, Mrs. Dernham, it's not here, so I say you have to, oh, she's lying down in the bed, Mr. Hamilton.
Um, sorry, I just kinda, I just kinda, I said that. And I was late because I was having some pep scout babies at the, at the school and, and Mrs. Thornton and Mrs. Kirk allowed me very generously to, um, recruit some pep scouts. Yes, sir. We have, um, before the court, before the board, um, that termination letter of very preserved. Uh, who hasn't shown up for work for two weeks, that, that's a, a full life dispute. And then there's the continuing litigation between Mr. West, Ms. West and the others. It's, it's continuing and we'll be doing any of these depositions and sometime next month. Just so you know, like, good, who scout does? You know what I did with the shoe horn?
I did, yeah.
I used it to get into the hat.
Thank you.
I thought she knew that I, I can post and do all the things.
Thank you.
She really wanna have that.
Okay, then, is the last, um, item on our agenda, so number twelve is adjourned. Maybe we have a recommendation for most of the attendants?
I don't think we have a more important.
Yeah, yeah, I did add it.
I added.
I did add it, yes. Are there junior employees that were retired? I didn't think so.
So, right, Mr. Hamilton?
I'm sorry, I'm waiting.
Mr. Hamilton?
I thought that was the last one.
Uh, no, uh, it was, it was right here, okay, all right, okay. Mr. Monde, he was just.
Speech, thank you.
Speech.
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 Well, I would just like to say, um, appreciate you all welcoming me into this, um, district, the Butler County District. And I'm excited to be here, so hopefully we'll have an awesome school year, thank you so much.
So we've got a recommendation for German, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, all in favor, Ms. Anderson, yes, I have a good evening.